You can just park there.
Well, I can do that. Or Michael dropped me off.
And now we put us into all the early morning.
Are we all ready? Okay, great. We do have a quorum present, and I'd like to call the March 8, 2016 Board of Education public hearing to order. And we're going to begin with our report from our advisory committee. And Mr. South, if you'd like to come forward, and Mr. Hummel, welcome.
Evening, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. This evening, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce a gentleman who is no stranger to the Board of Education. Mr. Steve Hummel is the Senior Vice President at Columbia Bank. He is also the Chairman of the Board's Budget Advocacy and Review Committee. And in just a few minutes, he will bring you that committee's recommendation relative to the Board's fiscal year 2017 draft budget. Before I turn this presentation over to Steve, I want to say a special thank you to him, as he served ably again this year despite having to fight the flu bug through the entire process. So at this time, I give you a now-healthy Mr. Hummel.
Well, thank you very much, Chris. Thank you again for allowing me to be part of the Budget Advocacy Committee. And I'm not sure if any of the committee members are here, but if they are, I'd like them to please stand.
I don't believe so.
Don't believe so, okay. And one thing I did learn in this process is that as you get older, it takes a lot longer to get better when you have the flu. So, okay.
Just sort of angle it toward.
More towards me?
Very good.
Okay, okay. And again, a Budget Advocacy and Review Committee met on February the 3, and again on March the 2, and plus weeks changed a very large number of emails because of the fact that I didn't want to be contagious around the members of the committee. So, and I would like to, again, thank the committee members for their dedication and work on reviewing the fiscal year 2017 budget. It's a time-consuming process for the committee as well as the staff because they, you know, provide all the data and support to our committee. We have provided the board with a written recommendation, and I'm sure that you've had the opportunity to read that report, so I'm not going to cover all the details that's contained in it this evening. Instead, I would like to give everyone a brief summary of the report for public. During the committee's deliberations, we discussed in detail all the revenues, reductions to the baseline budget, and the planned expenditures for fiscal year 2017. We also discussed the generally anemic condition of the local economy, and all one would have to do is see that the percentage of students that continue to receive reduced and free meals still hover around 50 percent. And additionally, the county's wealth per pupil still lags statewide, wealth per pupil, by nearly 31 and 1/2 percent. And we also understand that this is the, actually, the first time in seven years that the board actually, well, we've requested above maintenance of effort, but we've never gotten it. But this is one of the few times that we really are kind of, you know, pushing the issue. They ask for above maintenance of effort. Last year, our committee recommended, and the board also requested, that the county take back the cost of the school nurses, the crossing guards that had been passed over the school system, you know, over the prior years. However, of course, the county did not grant that request. So we fully understand and support the board's decision to request that the county commissioners, again, consider some or all of that request. We believe that the board has been a team player with the county government, and we certainly hope our county fathers will remember that. In line of other, in line with our discussions, we also recognize that the commissioners are also facing increasing needs with dwindling resources of their own budgets. But nevertheless, we must ask them not to shift any more costs onto the school system. As I mentioned earlier, the school system has already absorbed the cost of buses, crossing guards, the duty centers director salary, which all were at one time provided by the county, to, you know, provided to the public schools, and they were provided by the county. Additionally, the county shifted, you know, that approximately $3 million cost of the school nurses to the schools when that program was defunded a few years back. The committee agrees with the line items that the board proposes. However, there are several that we believe that the board should give additional thought and consideration. The committee was concerned that the board has eliminated three administrative interim positions. We recommend that those positions not be eliminated because Washington County has demonstrated with much success and proven that it's less costly in the long run to grow our own future leaders, examples, principals, and assistant principals. We believe the board could pay for the restoration of some or all of these positions and possibly create additional saves as it moves through the 2017 fiscal year by doing all or a combination of the following suggestions from our committee. Of course, we're asking, you know, recommending that you ask the county commissioners to fund the additional OPEB contribution as a non-recurring cost outside of maintenance of effort. While increasing this annual payment is very important, this funding method may be appealing to the county as it would not require recurring commitment from the commissioners. Additionally, should the county not be able to continue this funding in the further years out, discontinuation would not impact future school operations. The board might also commit or consider funding this incremental OPEB contribution in the short term from the fund balance. The committee members also support the board's decision to assume the operation of Children's Village. We believe that it is a very necessary step to ensure the continuation of the vital safety programs that are in place there for our second graders. However, we do believe that there possibly may be additional options for outside funding for that type of a project. In particular, we would encourage the board to look at possible grants that may be available for that type of a program. It is entirely possible that outside organizations dedicated to fire and traffic safety may be able to provide additional funding that could mitigate the costs of operating Children's Village. Again, I want to reiterate the fact that our committee and myself personally believe that Children's Village is very worthwhile, and we're glad that the Board of Education feels the same way. The committee also finds the concept of the Naviance Guidance Software very interesting. We think that it could provide very valuable college and career information. It would also help leverage the guidance counselor's time so they could provide more in-depth service to students. However, we question using that as a new program and an optional program in a tight budget, excuse me, in a tight budget year. We believe that implementation of this program could be postponed and added in future budget years when funding improves. In short, again, we believe that it's a worthwhile program, but maybe not affordable at this time. The board has also included a $20,000 item in budget to provide student athletes with a milk supplement that has claims to mitigate soft tissue injuries and speed recovery of contact sports. However, recent negative press appearing, you know, criticizing University of Maryland for failing to require irrefutable evidence on the effectiveness of the fifth-quarter energy drink prior to endorsing the product raises concern about providing an unproven product to our students. Therefore, the committee believes that this expenditure should be stricken from the 2017 budget and returned in future years only after the effectiveness of this product has been scientifically proven. Also, the board, the Budget Committee also would like us, you know, the budget includes a $75,000 additional athletic field trip support. The committee would suggest that the board consider possible alternatives to placing this increase in the budget. The possible options, of course, would include support from public-private partnerships, possibly requesting the athletic boosters to provide this support, and as a very, very, very last resort, increasing that participation fee. Of course, none of us want to see that occur. Finally, the committee noted that the budget includes seven new computer technician positions to support the influx of the new iPads in the system. And I want to also congratulate the board for the technology efforts. That's very important because, as everybody sitting around here knows, that technology is really the future for our students. And given that the system has seven high school feeder patterns, that number roughly correlates to one technician per feeder pattern, we suggest that this budget items could be reduced by one technician, as the Hancock and Clear Spring schools could be covered by one technician, and that would create a save of approximately $85,000 annually. And again, we believe that the Board of Education has acted responsibly with the funds that you've been entrusted to in the past. The board has strived to maintain low average class size and provide individual and differentiated instruction. The board has once again continued to decrease costs in non-instructional areas and to funnel budget dollars right into the classroom where it belongs. And we believe that the Board of Education has acted in the very best interest of every citizeness of Washington County. And again, I, you know, I want to thank you for the time and allowing me to speak here this evening, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have about the comments from our committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hummel, and I think we're all glad that you're feeling better.
Oh, well, thank you.
We are still in this report phase of the agenda, and this is our committee, advisory committee here. So if anyone has questions at this point, Mr. South and Mr. Hummel would entertain any questions.
Absolutely. No questions.
Seeing no questions, we appreciate the work of the committee. It's always, I know, a heavy lift. And do you have any comments about the process, anything that we could do to help you going forward the next cycle?
No, other than everyone stay healthy. That'd be my only recommendation.
Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, completing that, we will now go into the public hearing session, and I'm just going to read a short statement of our policy KD regarding public hearings. Recognizing that certain contemplated actions of the Board of Education have significant public impact or are of widespread public concern, the Board of Education may, from time to time, designate certain dates and locations for the purpose of public hearings on announced topics. Persons speaking as individuals will be allotted three minutes. Those representing an organization will be allotted five minutes. No presenter may waive all or a portion of his or her allotted time. Public hearings shall be for a period of up to two and 1/2 hours. The hearing will end prior to the two-and-1/2-hour time limit if all individuals present have had the opportunity to speak. A public hearing is intended to provide the public with an opportunity to share their ideas, reactions, and support concerning the announced topic. Board of Education members and/or the superintendent will only be recognized by the presiding officer to correct misinformation or add context information that the speaker may not have provided, or to ask for clarification. Following a speaker's presentation, the superintendent may designate a staff member to address that individual's concern, or may ask the speaker to contact a particular department or a particular staff member at an appropriate time. At this point, we have two individuals signed up, and we will take them in the order in which they signed up. First, we have a Charles Wagman. If you will come forward, sir. And again, I believe you're representing, you're speaking here today as an individual, so you'll have three minutes.
That's correct. I understand.
Yes, sir.
I've already given your staff person nine copies of my comments.
That's been distributed.
Yes. Good evening, President Breitman, other members of the Washington County Board of Education, Dr. Wilcox, and the public. My name is Charles Wagman, Jr., a local attorney for the last 48 years. I've always considered myself to be a student of good government with a commitment to and responsibility to serving the public. Recently, a budgetary process used by this Board of Education has come to my attention, which I believe to be not only contrary to the principles and practice of good government, but also contrary to the statutes which govern this board's conduct. Most importantly, that process is contrary to the interests of the general public whom you represent. There's two statutes which I am primarily referring to, are Sections 5-101 and 5-105 of the Education Article of the Code of Maryland. I've provided you with a copy of both of those statutes. Those two sections are part of a carefully conceived legislative structure in which the respective powers and limitations of local school boards, the state board, and county governments are delineated and balanced. That's a direct quote from the Maryland Court of Appeals, if you're interested. The Washington County Board of Education now chooses to ignore the requirements of that legislative structure for reasons not known to me. The practical effect of ignoring the legislative structure is the Board of Education's failure to include its unliquidated surplus, or even any portion thereof, in its budgets as revenue after fiscal year 1996. While this budget for fiscal year 2017 shows zero dollars as the prior year's surplus, in fact, that surplus for fiscal year 2016 is in excess of $13,500,000, with probably another $5 million, perhaps more, as my estimate, for the surplus for the current fiscal year. Both those figures would be part of your unliquidated surplus, which are supposed to be included as part of your budgetary revenue. From my point of view, the Board of Education has about $18 million and $1.5 million in its unliquidated surplus, which it's supposed to include as revenue in its budget. Contrary to my view of the law, the board refuses to include those funds in its budget in spite of the requirement of Section 5-101 that it do so. One rather obvious reason is that the Board of Education wants to increase artificially the dollar amount the county commissioners must provide to the Board of Education under the state's maintenance of effort.
Mr. Wagman, we're out of time. Could you conclude your statements, please?
I don't believe it. Okay, maybe the three minutes did run up. I would ask that you include, revise your process. And you're creating political problems between yourselves and the county commissioners, which you can easily void if you choose to cooperate with them. Continuing the way you're going is not cooperating with the county commissioners.
Thank you for your comments. The next individual signed up is Mr. Neil Becker. Good evening.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Wilcox. I have a variety of items and questions regarding the proposed budget. One, Mr. Hummel already addressed, in that the fifth-quarter fresh line item. I would argue that should be removed, given the questionable nature of the data regarding its effectiveness. There are plenty of other things, though it's a miniscule line item. There are plenty of things we can do with that money that we know are already clarified and have beneficial uses. I have a couple staffing questions that are not addressed in the booklet. Bestrow Elementary School, which is a large school with a diverse population and an excellent staff, does not have an in-house guidance counselor. We believe there's tremendous value in a guidance counselor in that building. While there's an excellent social worker, that social worker spends a tremendous amount of time doing what is unique to that social worker position, working in the community and with families, that a dedicated guidance counselor in that position, in that school, has tremendous value. And we believe that there's tremendous value in an assistant principal located at Hancock High School. Currently, there is not a full-time assistant principal in the building, which would do a tremendous amount to balance both the academic rigor that could be addressed and to balance out some of the potential diversity and equity gaps that we see in the system. We do understand that there is a media specialist cut as a result of the consolidation of Winter Street and Conica Jig Schools, but I also wonder if there is value in the cut that I've been notified of at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. I don't know if that's accurate information that I received, but I was under the impression that there would be a change in the amount of time the media specialist has at Barbara Ingram. I'll move quickly through the next few items to speed up the process. On page 7 of the document, there are three cuts listed, one at middle school, one at high school, and an ESP position at a high school. Those budget line items, or lines 2, 8, and 9, I'm curious why there are cuts in staffing at the high schools. On page 11, there is a new line item, a $90,000 line item for small computer equipment that might be related to the technology rollout, but it's unclear in that it's just a single line item that says "small computer equipment." On page 12, a few issues regarding enrich- On page 12, a few issues regarding enrichment. Again, that could be due to the consolidation of the buildings, but there are two enrichment cuts and one talented and gifted cut in the budget, so I'm just curious if those are related to the consolidation, especially given our desire to bridge the achievement gap. On page 14, it was a very interesting note for me, was that it appears there's a cut for mentor resource teachers. In the fall, we've heard about the value of the resource teachers and the work they do to retain new hires and to mentor our new hires, and given the three-year, 10-year opportunity, the value of those mentor resource teachers is tremendous. So I'm hopeful to clarify where those cuts or why those cuts came about. I have a question that maybe Mr. South would be able to address. On page 29, there are $600,000, or there is, excuse me, $600,000 identified in the line item for capital maintenance. If the Board of County Commissioners decided to improve our funding or to pick up those items, where would that money go? Where would the $600,000 then go within the budget? How would that impact the next steps of the budget process? And finally, as I see my time is winding down, on page 39, there's a line item for consultants. If Washington County Public Schools is hiring two new staffers in the HR department, would we still need to spend $50,000 on consultants related to diversity if we're hiring two new specialists whose focus will be diversity hiring and retention? I see my time has expired. I appreciate the opportunity to share some questions and thoughts regarding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate your time this evening. And certainly, if you have other items, please feel free to give those to staff if you weren't able to complete them.
Thank you.
I have no one else signed up to speak. If there is anyone here, please come forward. That's a short two-and-a-half hours. Oh, there we go. Welcome.
Happy International Women's Day to everybody, first and foremost. Good evening. My name is Carlos Malat, and I'm here as an individual, as a member of the Diversity Task Force. And I think first and foremost, I'd like to applaud the efforts of the task force and definitely its leadership under Mrs. Francisco. Very appreciative of her time and efforts. I recently read in the newspaper that WCPS will be taking money out of the salary resource pool and using that money, around $100,000, to cover the cost of a proposed minority recruitment and retention specialist position. I strongly support diversity, and as a Latino with kids in the system, I will be the first to tell you how important it is to have a diverse array of role models and positive adult figures in their lives, especially those working in the school system. And in general, I support the efforts of the school system to increase diversity, address cultural competency, and address the opportunity gap that exists in Washington County schools. And I'm thankful for those efforts. But that being said, I have to say that I do not, again, as an individual, I do not support at this time the hiring of a diversity recruiter and retention specialist. I don't know that the system has done all it can on retention in order to justify the creation of this position. I am a firm believer that you must actively work to retain the staff that you have before you can even think about bringing more staff in. The person who holds this position must also have a budget to work with, and as of late, as I understand it, and I could be mistaken, but WCPS has stated that they do not have the funds to do some of the things that they would like to do, in fact even saying that they plan on asking the county commissioners for more money. So that budget that that individual would have to work with is important. Last year's HR survey stated that 78 teachers resigned. This is the highest in five years. Those 78 resignations were not non-renewals or retirements. Of those that did leave the system and those that answered the survey, 43% stated they'd left due to retirement, 39% stated that they left due to work environment, and 38% left due to workload. And with all due respect, I have a very difficult time understanding how a reasonable person could believe that by extending the workday at a half-hour and a half-step worth of pay and with the retention numbers that we do have, that we will be able to recruit the most qualified candidates to come here and work, no matter what their background is. An employee for any organization wants to be respected and valued and also be paid a salary that supports their family. I think that if we do all of those things, then we won't need to create a $100,000 a year position, with all due respect. My question is, do we, as stakeholders, as an organization, as a school system, do we feel that we have done all we can and we have exhausted all options in terms of retention and recruitment in order to justify creating this position with money from the salary pool? Again, our task force meeting is on Monday, so I'm a little kind of maybe jumping the gun here. I hope I'm not, but I have yet to hear the specifics of this position. I'm wrapping up. And what they will do differently that will result in the numbers that we hope for, both in terms of recruitment and retention. I think it's a good idea in theory, but without the resources and without exhausting all the efforts on retention and all these ideas, the use of funds, especially salary funds for a highly-paid position, will not be a good use of taxpayer dollars, and I don't, I'm afraid that we won't get the results that we're looking for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and address the board during this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I would like to just share with the public before we adjourn the next steps in our budget. Again, we've had this public hearing this evening. On the 15th of March, we will have another budget work session to discuss what we've heard, the feedback we've heard from our advisory committee and the other individuals who have spoken to us this evening. Certainly, there is time between today and then if anyone else would like to contact us and emails. Contact board members. We're always open to receiving further information on the budget. We will also, after the 15th, be sending out copies of the approved budget to the Board of County Commissioners, making copies available for public review, and posting on the WCPS website. On the 22nd, we are scheduled to meet with the county commissioners to present and discuss the FY 2017 budget, and that is a daytime meeting here at CES. So we are at the end of our agenda, and again, another short two-and-a-half hours. I was really hopeful we'd have more community members here tonight, but again, we are always open to receiving feedback, so please pass the word and get it to us before the 15th. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.